All right. Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, April 7th, 2016. Calling this meeting to order, Board of Selectmen for the town of Hingham. First matter on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Entertaining motion to approve the minutes of February 17th, 2016.
So what?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda? Don't say anybody, so we'll move on to the first matter of business, which is a financial overview. And at this time, I would welcome the chairman of the advisory committee, Tom Piles, Michael Nelligan from Powers and Sullivan, and do I see?
He's not here yet.
Okay. Joining us shortly will be the audit committee chair, Josh Gregory. And also joining us tonight are our town accountant, Sue Nickerson, and our treasurer, Gene Montgomery. Welcome, ladies.
Welcome.
Okay. Gentlemen, welcome.
Must be the subject matter.[82.53][82.53](Laughter). I hope we don't put anybody to sleep in the audience. I hope the public is more enthusiastic about this than the attendance. Must be the weather.
Well, we're returning to something that has happened in the past, and it's just to kind of give the public a general overview of where we are financially. An overview of the warrant articles. I asked Mr. Coughlin, who's present in first row, to join us if there were any questions. Welcome, Mr. Coughlin. Thank you for coming. He's our town council. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay.
Fire away, Tom.
Okay. Thank you. I'm delighted to be here to talk a little bit about the budget for 2017. First of all, I'd like to say that the town is in a superior, healthy financial position. Fund balance is at an historical high of $31.4 million as of June 15th, June of '15. The unassigned fund balance is $2.9 million above our guidelines of 16% to 20% of total annual expenditure. So our savings account is in terrific shape. We also have an abundant amount of resources to fund our town services. Over the last few years, we have restored services to pre-2008 levels. While there are still unmet needs, generally, the town services are at a reasonable level, and there isn't anything broken. It's a nice position to be in. We've done all this in a collaborative and collective cooperative effort. The town managers, the school board, have been very cooperative in making sure that we get the information that we need to make the decisions that we've done, and we've come up with. This is awfully difficult for anybody to see. I hope the people in the audience through the set will be able to read this. Do you all have copies?
Yes, thank you, Tom.
I'm sorry that we don't have copies for the audience, but hopefully you'll be able to see this. I'm going to ask you to take a look at the third column, forecast for 2017. That is the budget that the advisory committee is recommending, and it totals $105.6 million. As usual, the 2017 budget took some effort to balance. Many requests were deferred as revenues continue to be flat or continue to flatten. Notably, new growth is expected to decrease by over $600,000 from 2016 to 2017, and that can be seen right there, from $1.2 million to $550,000. State aid and local receipts are estimated to increase only marginally for 2017. The town revenues exclusive of fund balance and excess overlay is expected to increase only 2.4%. That's $2.4 million from year to year. And I want to stop and emphasize that. The resources that we need to fund the expenditures for the town, exclusive of the fund balance and excess overlay, is only growing at 2.4% from 2016 to 2017. That's our operating revenues. That's the levy, the new growth, the locals and state aid. So it, I'll get back to that, but that's something I want to emphasize, that the rate of growth in the town from year to year is slowing and has been over the last few years, and is at only 2.4% this year. Now to some specifics. We'll continue to adequately fund our capital outlay to ensure that we don't fall behind in the maintenance of our town assets. Normal capital needs will receive $2.2 million in 2017. Over the last few years, we've had a relatively solid commitment to make sure that the expenditures for capital outlay continue to rise from year to year, and we're delighted to have it at $2.2 million this year. And as you can see from the slide, we're hoping that that will continue over the years by $100,000 per year. Now, that doesn't show up in, hold on for just a second. That doesn't show up in this figure right here, which says it's $3.5 million. There's an extraordinary capital item in this year's budget of $1.1 million that will fund the library repairs for the roof and the HVAC system. Those funds will be sourced by fund balance for 2017. The size of this expenditures was extraordinary, was not going to fit into the operating costs for 2017, and we took from fund balance approximately $1.5 million to fund that and other needs. Now, I ought to say that that fund balance is, in my mind, a result of the surpluses for 2016, which amounted to a little over $800,000, and the expected FEMA returns of approximately $450,000. So it will go, the surplus in the FEMA funds will go up to fund balance, but then we'll take those to fund capital expenditures for 2017. That was fast. Everybody with that?
Yep.
It's kind of confusing, but, okay. I wanted to show this slide here next. This shows the 2017 year budgets and its increases from year to year, 2016 to 2017, by departments. You will see that the municipal budget is increasing by only $500,000. The only major increase in that was in the fire department, which is receiving an extra $100,000 this year for basically salaries. In addition, the MWRA charges for the sewer department is increasing by $100,000. There were a few, but only a few, minor additional appropriations that we are recommending. $38,000 for a part-time staff in the ID department, $9,000 for a part-time support in the animal control area, and $7,000 for the library to remain open on Sundays in May and June. Now, the next item is the school department, and as you can see there, the school department's budget will be increasing by $2.2 million or 4.8%. Recall that 80% of the school budget is personnel cost. Similar to the municipal side, there are only a few minor additional items that are going to be recommended in this budget. Notably, there's a new bus lease that is currently being negotiated for a little in excess of $100,000. I will also note here, there's a $1 million increase in employee benefits. Extraordinary increase for us. We haven't seen this type of increase in the past few years. We were informed that our employee insurance premiums will be going up by 15% in 2017. First time we've had any increase of that size, but it caused us to take a look at what that cost would be in 2017. Indeed, we will have an additional $900,000 in insurance premiums in 2017. Now, some good news. Debt service will show only, will show a moderate decrease as no new debt has recently been issued. We are recommending that the tax relief measures, both in the unused levy area and the meals tax reserves, will be continued. I referred to the fund balance in the beginning, and I will let you know that there will be several issues, both in the warrant and from the needs for the library repair, that may cause us to draw $2 million from that unassigned fund balance. We expect at the end of the year, or sometime in the next couple of years, that the fund balance ratio will go down closer to the 20% level, which is the cap of our guidelines, but it will remain healthy and above that level in the foreseeable future. I'm going to turn your attention now for, I would ask Board of Selectmen if they have any questions about 2017 at this point.
The last thing you mentioned, Tom. You said the fund balance will go down to 20?
Yes. The unassigned fund balance has approximately $1.5 to $2 million of requests that will come in through the warrants and through the additional capital required for the repair of the library that equal about $1.5 to $2 million. We are now about $3 million in excess of our guidelines, and it's approximately $19 million, the unassigned fund balance? Yeah, the unassigned fund balance today?
3.1?
3.1 million dollars.
Excess.
In excess.
Yes.
Above and beyond the total unassigned.
A little over 19, I think.
The total unassigned fund balance is $21.1 million at this point. We can expect that several warrant articles, such as the funding of Lincoln School Apartments, the water company fees from a legal standpoint. There are a couple other items, including.
Sped trust fund.
Right. But also, we will be hitting fund balance for the $470,000 additional requirements for the library repairs that were above what we first entered into. So we will be hitting fund balance for about $500,000 for the library repair as well. So all of that adds up to about a $2 million, $1.5 to $2 million if passed at town meeting, needs from fund balance that we'll be taking in 2017.
Just maybe the, my question may be more toward the future. You think that we won't be repeating that process based on your projections in terms of the excess?
The excess above and beyond our guidelines will remain above the 20% guideline that we have established from a financial policy standpoint. What happens in the future, it's interesting. How fund balance has increased in the past is basically through surpluses. With this budget, we don't expect a whole lot of surpluses in 2017, so there's not likely to be a huge additions to fund balance in the future from surpluses that we know of. Other things could happen, but because the total expenditures increase from year to year, this year it went from $1.1 million to $105 million. That is the denominator in how we figure out what the fund balance ratios are. So that's going to be ever increasing, we would assume. At the same time, if there isn't any surpluses from the prior year, there's not likely to be any increases, which means that there's going to be pressure on fund balances, especially the unassigned balances in the future.
Thank you.
It's a little confusing, but.
Yeah, we've been hearing this, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. We're in a wonderful position to be able to balance this year's budget from a capital standpoint because we had that excess fund balance. Any other questions? Okay. I want to go back to this figure here, these slides here. In the coming, the growth rates that you see here flatten out at $550,000 for the foreseeable future. If those aren't increased through new projects that come in that will allow us to increase our tax base, we can't expect new growth to improve dramatically. If, if we don't find ways to increase our revenues, we can expect, per these forecasts, approximately 2% to 2.5% growth in our sources to fund our expenditures in the future. I want to stop for just a minute. We saw it last year. We're going to see it for the foreseeable future unless there are projects that come in to increase our new growth.
And I think it's worth noting on this slide that if you look at the dynamics of the school budget as an example, the school budget typically grows by about 3.5% to 4% a year, just keeping things where they are.
Thank you.
So it's, you know, we live in this proposition 2.5 world, but that would suggest that we would be in a circumstance where services might have to contract, particularly if our group insurance rates continue to climb as they are.
Yeah. The reason that I'm bringing this up is if you take a look at, nobody told me I could do this very well. If you take a look at this figure here, this is the bottom line going out year to year. That shows continual deficits of about a million dollars and increase. That's with a revenue growth rate of 2% to 2.5%. When we go back to the uses, I can't get up to it right now, but the, when we talk about the expenditures that we have from, the appropriations that we have from year to year, there are a couple things that are embedded in those forecasts that are misleading. It understates the potential deficits that may be facing us in the future. As Mary says, the forecast assumes that everything grows at only 2%. All the appropriations grow at 2% except for the employee benefits area. Correct. School department at 2% is not realistic. School department is going to grow at 4% to 4.5% a year. Additionally, with the wonderful projects that we have in front of us, there are likely to be additional debt that we take on as we fund additional projects. That will put additional pressure on debt service, which goes into the operating account, which means that we are potentially understating what the real deficits would be if we assume everything else stays the same in these forecasts going forward. That puts pressure on new growth. It puts pressure on a discussion that we ought to have from a public standpoint on what level of services are necessary or required or desired in town. It also puts a lot of pressure on the type of wonderful, worthy projects that we have in front of us, from a timing and amount of when we assume these projects, because that's going to affect debt service. All this, we have to be mindful of the impact on taxpayers and the impact on our rating agencies. So the net is that we were able to do a wonderful job with the cooperation of a lot of people to fund the requirements and the needs for 2017. It was done on a cooperative basis. We're going to need every bit of cooperation going forward because there will be pressures, Ted says, every year, to balance the budget when we have pressures that we have looking for.
Bless you.
Questions? Board of Selectmen, public?
You know, if I could just add a couple points for you, for your consideration. Tom and I obviously talked about this before he was ready to present, and he's right with the last statement he made. You know, I've done 21 budgets for the town, annual budgets now, and I can't remember which one was easy. The annual budget process is always going to be a difficult process because the needs, wants are always going to bump up against the resources. And, you know, Hingham has always been very disciplined in not letting the annual needs and wants bleed into the savings accounts. So a lot of towns utilize their fund balance and their savings accounts to pay their operating expenses when one of those monster needs comes and they can't say no, or they can't find another revenue source. So I think really you're always going to be challenged with that. The last few years, I think, have been a little bit easier than maybe the three years back right after the economic recession, where we had a lot of very austere budgets, and you've been able to add back a lot to some of the services. And I think the message of the forecast here is those lines are tightening up again, and you're either going to have to start restricting some spending, find new revenue sources, you know, one of two. You know, I know I'm always chided for having 2% in the forecast as the estimate, but it's really designed to tie the resources that we know we have to what we can spend, and if you increase it above 2%, then you know you're tilting the, it's like a seesaw, you're tilting that fifth year out a lot more than the second year or the third year. And that's the design of the forecast, so you can see, and I think that's why we're in a good financial position, is the town's always been able to look out five years and see if the decisions they're making this year were starting to turn them on a course that was going to be harder to correct in future years. And it just sort of keeps you more towards making sure your annual operating expenses match your annual operating income and don't exceed it.
Did you want Mike to tell us what good shape we're in?
Well, I mean, Tom, you've handled the annual operating budget, but, you know, Mike's our independent auditor and has been for five years now, six years?
Oh, it's more than that. 2000, yeah, six years.
Six years.
And I think, I thought it would be appropriate for the board at the same time to hear from
the external auditors, not the internal folks.
All I could really add is just to really nod and say that I agree with everything that Tom presented. This is an extremely well-run, healthy financial community, that your systems are good, your people are good, everything runs well. Talking about debt service, your debt service ratio as a percentage of total budgeted expenditures was 10.3% five years ago, and this past year it's down 7.1%. So there's room there if you need to borrow money. And with interest rates, you know, historical low rates, that's not problematic either. So you're a lot better off than a lot of other communities, and you're ahead of the curve in funding retirement benefits and OPEB benefits, and, you know, your funding ratio on the pension plan is 71%. A lot of communities hadn't come back from, they're still in the low 60s. A lot of good communities are in the mid-60s, ones that were 100% funded before. So I think you've got a very healthy, well-run community, and you all know that too, I'm sure. Again, nodding in agreement with everything that's been said already.
So one comment, interesting. Our reputation, probably not surprisingly, goes beyond this board and this town. I was at a forum a couple weeks ago in Weymouth. Somebody from another part of town was basically hailing this town as the model of success in terms of how the town is run, in terms of budgeting and services and so forth. So I was very happy to sit there and listen to somebody touting our town in that way. So it's nice to know that other people notice too.
Mr. Chairman, we have Josh Gregory, the audit committee chairman, and I thought it'd be appropriate also to have him at this time talk about, a little bit about what they do, and, you know, their group has been around now for six years too, I believe, and.
Good evening, Mr. Gregory.
Good evening.
Oh, yes, sir. Actually, we need to have you at a microphone, or no one can hear you. I hope you could join us at the table and share your perspectives as well.
I probably don't have a lot more to add than what Mike has already spoken about, really. What I am happy to talk about is just the work that we do, the charter of the audit committee and the process that we go through during our meetings, really. We were formed to oversee the audit, to make sure that the audit is done on time in a highly professional manner, and Powers and Sullivan have done a terrific job over the last six years that you've been with us.
Seven.
Seven. So they've done a fabulous job. But the audit committee really is, our role is to make sure that things stay on schedule. And so in the spring, we begin to have meetings to make sure that it is staying on schedule. Powers and Sullivan report back to us about every six weeks or so as to the progress, any issues that might come up that we need to address or maybe follow up on. They're not getting cooperation, which is very, very rare, actually. And so it's, they've done such a good job, it's been really pretty easy for us to just monitor the process. Their role, of course, as auditors, is to make sure that the reporting systems maintain their integrity, that, you know, there's no fraud, which there hasn't been. So it's just going through the general governmental accounting process.
One thing that Greg's, Josh's group does is, which is very important, and I think why the audit committee was formed, is it creates independence from this board. Previous to the audit committee, the Board of Selectmen, representing management, were charged with hiring the audit firm and managing the entire audit process. And most recommended practices say, you know, a healthy organization will create some segregation of duties in that regard. So now the audit committee issues the RFP, I guide them through that process, and they hire the audit firm. The audit firm reports to them. I sit on the board along with the audit committee, along with Sue Nickerson, the town accountant, but as non-voting members. And so it, you know, well-run public companies regularly have this in place, and, I mean, usually don't, but, you know, this is part of a professionalism approach that we took about six years ago.
Questions from my colleagues?
Just one thing that we might want to think about as we're going through the audit. Given the revenue picture and the fact that revenue is, revenue growth is slowing down, I can see a circumstance over the next year or two where our revolving funds may be places where we might look for funds to help fund some of our ongoing operating needs. And I know that as part of the audit process, we're looking at the revolving funds and the process. I might ask that we pay particular attention to some of the balances in those accounts, and I think we'd probably be looking for a point of view from both of you as to whether those balances are satisfactory, whether there's any, whether there might be any room in there. I know that we have revolving funds that are set up across many different parts of the town. The way I view those is that's money that taxpayers are paying to the town. And again, I think as we're, as we approach next year's budget, if the picture is as Ted and Tom have shown, we'll be, we'll be looking for lots of different sources, so that would, that would be appreciated.
Well, gentlemen, thank you so much for coming in. Sue, is there anything you'd like to add before we move on to the next topic?
Could I just, I just wanted to say thank you. You know, we get the opportunity to thank a lot of the departments and the many committees that work.
that work. A lot of times when we're at work, the Advisory Committee is next door, often working later than we are, and we don't always have a chance to say thank you to the Advisory Committee for all the great work that you do and Sue and Jean is supporting advisory and capital outlay. It's always a difficult process, but as, I think, as Tom spoke about, the collaborative kind of respectful discussion that's been had, that really starts with the tone that's set by the Advisory Committee, by its leadership, by all its members. So, we are just very grateful for all the very hard work that you've done.
I agree completely.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure, a real pleasure. I thought while we have the Treasurer here, we could take one of the votes out of order so that she could perhaps... Come on up, Jean. Thank you again, gentlemen.
Yeah, we're taking an item out of order, the debt refunding, and Jean's been managing this process, and we'll let Jean tell us why we're doing this and what we're doing.
We were, my name is Jean Montgomery. I'm the Treasurer Collector, and thanks for having me here tonight and moving us up, moving me up a little bit. This is, we were contacted by our financial advisors about a month or so ago regarding an opportunity to refund, which was a refinance, two debt issuances that we have from prior years, one from 2007 and one from 2009, and those are bonds. And by refunding them due to the more favorable interest environment, we would be saving over the next 13 years about $1.7 million. So, it's approximately $130,000 a year for the first 10 years and $115,000 for the remaining two years. And this is due to the interest rate environment. The current bonds are out at a range of 4% to 5% coupon rate, and they're expecting that in this environment, we'll be able to refinance or refund these same, the remaining 10 years. These are callable bonds at a 73 basis points to 2.36 spread out over the remaining, remaining years. So, we think it's a great idea, and we're just here. Part of the process on a refunding is that it starts with the Board of Selectmen, that we bring it to you, and you, if you agree that it's a good idea, you vote for us to go forward with the process, get the ball rolling. One of the other advantages of it is the timing of it. We are going out, we have a note maturing from last year, it's maturing on May 22nd. So, we'll be able to roll this whole refunding process into that renewal of that ban, which is another advantage to doing this right now because we get to do one official statement, it's one process where we can put the three sales in the same document. So, it's, it's good timing and it's good money. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
With your approval, that's, that's all I'm here for.
That answered my question, I was looking at timing.
Make a motion?
Make a motion that in order to reduce interest costs, the Treasurer is authorized to provide for the sale and issuance of refunding bonds under, that's General Law's Chapter 44, Section 21A, to refund all or any portion of the remaining principal of and redemption premium interest on any of the town's $6,514,750 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2007 bonds dated September 15, 2007. It's $38,565,991 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2009 bonds, Series A dated October 28, 2009, and it's $3.7 million general obligation refunding bonds, Series B dated October 28, 2009, outstanding as of the date of this vote, provided that no such refunding bonds shall be issued under this vote unless and until the final interest rates and other terms of such refunding bonds have been approved by this board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you very much. Good night.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. Turning to the next item of business, we're going to be discussing, just to kind of give the public a preview, you should, at this point, be getting in the mail this blue book, this warrant, it'll be coming, you know, Friday or Monday probably to everybody, okay? It's pending. And when we go to town meeting, we'll be referring to the articles contained within it. And I thought it would be helpful if, at this point, we speak to three of them, and they will be Article 20, Article 27, and Article 19. Article 20 is the road building, Article 27 is the Selectman's Parcel, Article 19 is the water company acquisition feasibility continuation. Each of us have taken one, we'll speak briefly to it, just to give the public a preview of what, what we're looking to do. So, with that having been said, returning to road building, and just by way of background, we have the highway here too, just in case I get into trouble, but building roads is an ongoing effort, and we have a very strong planning board that does a great job permitting roadways that are designed to last, but no road lasts forever. And, you know, over the course of time, I'm sure that each of you can speak to some kind of pothole you went through and didn't enjoy. What we're trying to do here is bring the roadways within the town of Hingham to a level that puts them into the good or excellent category, and this, this grading system, if you will, is one that's established by the Department of Public Works, the Engineering Department, you know, their expertise, their experience speaks to, you know, an evaluation of the condition of the roadways. And sometimes, you know, a roadway condition can require what's called a full-depth reconstruction, which is a very expensive process, and that's for roads in poor shape. But for those roadways that are in fair condition, you know, the idea is that you don't need to do as much work, okay, sorry about that, you don't need to do as much work on them. You can do some paving perhaps, some microseal, which we've explained in earlier meetings, which is designed to bring the roadway from a fair condition to a good and potentially excellent condition. There has in the past been a list or a schedule that's published on the website, our town website, which shows the schedule of roads that the Department of Public Works plans to do each, each calendar year. So, in response to some citizen input here, you know, particularizing certain needs in certain neighborhoods, we thought we'd take a more aggressive approach, and that approach is to seek to borrow some additional funding so that we can do more roads, basically. As you can see from the slide that's shown overhead, initially 56 roads. With this borrowing initiative, we would do 95 roads. And as you can see from the funding down below, this is how we propose to pay for it over time. The theory being, and the goal is, that if we're able to bring the roadway system of the town of Hingham to a good and excellent condition in terms of its wearability, things like that, it will sustain the roadway system longer and ultimately decrease the cost to maintain it. So, we're, we're supercharging this, so to speak, with the idea of having a longer-term savings spread out, because obviously if the roads are in good condition or excellent condition, we're not doing full-depth reconstruction, which can really bog us down. So, I think I've just spoken to that, but here's the slide that we're talking about here. You know, I'm sure that each of you can call up in your minds a roadway that's in poor condition. That's not to say that this proposal ignores those roadways, but we'll be able to bring the entire roadway system along in such a way that we gradually and over, over time eliminate those roads that are in poor condition as well. So, turning to the, what would be the last slide in this presentation, and thank you, Tom, for doing this. You can see that the goal here is to have over 90% of the roads within, and this is, these are public ways, by the way, these aren't private streets. Some of the subdivisions in the community have been permitted on the express condition that they remain private and not subject to town maintenance. So, this, this is, these are public ways, and public ways are accepted at town meeting after it's gone through an inspection process by the Department of Public Works, signed off by the Planning Board. So, here's our goal, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to borrow some money upfront, we're going to fix most of the roads, bring them up to great condition, in addition to, you know, having no more potholes or at least minimizing them. That's what we're trying to do here. So, we'd ask that, you know, when you go into town meeting, think about that, your roadway may be good now, but there's plenty of roadways, I think, that would benefit from having this extra effort put into it, and that's why we're supporting this. We're responding to some energized expression from the community, and thank you for your attention. Questions, comments?
Just a comment.
Sure.
I want to thank my colleagues and also Ted, I think we all kind of worked on this issue, for seeing it as a priority, and it obviously is. And I know when I first came on the board, one of the things I was hoping to see happen was investment in the, in the roads, so this is, this is great, and I want to thank the neighbors in different parts of the town that not only came out to the meetings and spoke, but had suggestions for us as to how we might be able to do it. And it was that cooperative effort, I think, in listening to what people in town needed, including my neighbors and many others. So, it really helps us do our job when we know what people in town are thinking and what they need and what they see as priorities, because in this instance, I think we all agreed that something had to be done.
Okay, well, yes, Carol?
Can I ask you a question?
I believe it's 2.4.
2.2.
2.42, thank you. Always good to have the Advisory Chair in the room.
Yeah.
All right, and we're going to now shift to a discussion of what has been colloquially referred to as the Selectman's Parcel on Beale Street, and Mr. Gannon is going to take us through that.
Doing my best, Ted, at the request of the Chairman, and I'm happy to do it. I was asked to just kind of provide a bit of an overview of the Selectman's Parcel, and it's in Article 27. I think if folks don't know the area, it's to Beale Street, it's about 12.7 acres, and I will say that from the warrant, it appears it goes back to 2005 town meeting when there was an effort based on utilizing state law and the bylaws to, to build approximately 20 to 40 affordable units. And since that time, very recently, we, you know, we've had some, some interest in doing something a little bit different, and that, that would be putting an assisted living component on the site. And what, what this article basically does is allow us to get an RFP. It doesn't require us to do anything with the land, but it certainly gives us the, the opportunity. So, it's zoned official and open space. We received it from the town for federal land, I'm sorry, was deeded to us in 1974, and I guess the key thing is at the town meeting, again, it's going to authorize us to allow for the disposition of the property for subsidized housing, and I guess the acronym is HSHI. Tom was kind enough to put this together, and it's, it's something that's been discussed very recently in terms of the need for additional units, and, and the good news is, is that of these approximately 80 units, 25 will be affordable, and what we can count, as we've been discussing this with issues previously, the 80, all 80 units will go towards our affordable number, which is, which is a very good thing. There's a whole permitting process that has to go through, I guess, and, you know, and again, another acronym, which I'm not sure what it means exactly, but the LIP program.
Local Initiative Process.
Thank you. I know we've talked about it and used an acronym before, and I guess in, in terms of what folks want to know when we may be able to get something done, I think the summer of 2018 would be the potential for occupancy of the, the 80 units of the assisted, assisted living. And the last thing that I guess I will say, and it's been reported probably in the paper, but also discussed at the meetings, is that the demographics have changed in Hingham so that we have an aging population, and something I've heard from seniors and folks that are moving in that direction is the, the need for additional affordable housing such as an assisted living or for senior housing. So, this is something, a movement in that direction. It's an opportunity that we, we voted to, to explore, and obviously it'll be up to the voters at town meeting to decide whether this is something they find of interest, and I know that we and I think Advisory have weighed into this already, so.
Thank you very much. I'd like to just point out to the residents, if I could, that presently DHCD recognizes 6.3% of our housing stock is affordable, and that's, that's a number that we continue to grapple with when we're dealing with these 40Bs. This would be done, the LIP process is sometimes referred to as, as Paul said, a friendly 40B. But again, ladies and gentlemen, this is simply a continuation of the intent that was voted on originally at town meeting a number of years ago. It's just that the form is, is mutating somewhat, and because these are rental, all these units would count if this project goes forward and is in fact permitted and a building occupancy permits issued. So, I'm hoping that the townspeople at town meeting will, in their wisdom, see, see the benefits of this and approve it.
Couple of things that I've heard from residents that have asked me about this that I thought would be worthwhile to communicate through you. One is, the town is not looking at building and operating an assisted living or an affordable assisted living facility. The town is looking to have a developer buy, develop, and operate the facility, just like the Affordable Housing Trust was focusing on single-family homes. Paul, you mentioned 20 to 40, that's what they were looking at, and they were going to sell those homes to private citizens and have some of them deed restricted. So, I wanted to make sure that, you know, we're not going into that business. We have a lot of business lines, and, you know, that's not one we're trying to do, but the need economically within the region is great. Those beds fill up immediately, and affordable assisted living projects are very, very scarce within the area, almost unheard of. And so, what town meeting's being asked for is to change the article that allowed single-family development to allow for an affordable assisted living development within that narrow range so that you, you wouldn't be able to just turn around and, you know, put rental property in just any nature. You're asking for a very specific thing from town meeting.
Ted, I think it's been, it's understood, but if not, this is property that we own.
Correct.
The RFP, as I mentioned, will, will go out and somebody will look to purchase that property.
Correct. We actually hope to get the RFP out. I don't know if we'll have it and out and back in time for town meeting, but that was our original hope, is to have some of these proposals from companies starting to come in so the town meeting could see them as they were discussing this. I'm not sure how fast they'll, they'll be turned around, but that's where we're headed.
Yes, Carol?
Let's play the rep, if the town is selling the land, so how would that be a contribution, what would be the local contribution?
Well, the local initiative program is, is a cooperative one between the owner and the applicant, and it's, it's not a stiff-arm exchange. They're working cooperatively. There's been LIPS in town before, Whiting Village, I think, was the first one that I can remember. I think perhaps Lincoln Apartments as well.
I think so.
So, it's not without precedent that this is occurring, and sometimes... And sometimes, this facilitates, I think, the, the review and the permitting and sign-off by the state agencies, when the communities are working cooperatively with the applicant on project. So, that would be the intention here. And the RFP sets out the conditions that we expect someone to comply with, as, as, you know, that's kind of the opening key to the door, so to speak. So anybody submitting an application or a proposal would have that in mind right up front, so they'd have to make, they'd be able to make that affirmative decision internally that they're going to cooperate.
Frequently, on virtually every 40B that the town has seen coming forward, the developer at one point in time meets with the town to try to see if the town is interested in doing it. It's private property, they want to exempt themselves from zoning to get more density on the, on the, on the property, and they want to see if the town would be interested, because clearly, if the town's interested, it's going to go a lot quicker than if the town is not interested. But when you own the property, there's no way to do what we would call an unfriendly 40B. You own it, so the town owns the property, it'll set the conditions, and if a developer doesn't propose something the town likes, the town doesn't have to follow that option. One point also I wanted to make is that you still have a discussion to have with Affordable Housing Trust. You've indicated that, that the Affordable Housing Trust will, you're, you're using these proceeds to fund future affordable housing, because that's what the original project was supposed to be. And I think it's important to note that, that one of the reasons, besides the added number on the housing index, is the feeling that you could probably realize more proceeds out of, out of a, an assisted affordable, an affordable assisted living complex as opposed to 20 single-family homes. And that would provide more resources for you to continue affordable housing in another area. I know you have issues that you're looking at Lincoln School Apartments and things like that, so I think this will provide a lot more revenue to the town. And I know that's what got people, when I said revenue, they said, "Well, we're going to get money from operating this," and I want to repeat again, we're not operating an assisted living facility. The revenue would be a one-time amount. I think actually--
Does that answer your question, Carol?
Yeah.
Jim, you got a question?
[inaudible]
Do you want to go to the mic, or?
No.
Oh, no one can hear you, other than the people in this room, Jim.
A key thing about the LIP projects is that the town's cooperation, already defined, counts as, quote, subsidy, so that things that are on the subsidized housing list, even if they aren't actually subsidized. And that's the key thing, that you're not putting money into it necessarily, but you're helping it. And in terms of 40, the subsidized housing majority, it counts for that reason.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Okay, I think we'll turn to the next item, and that would be Article 19. Mary, this is the water company acquisition.
So Article, Article 19, coincidentally, in 2014, Article 19 was the water company, and here we are again two, two years later. And, you know, we, we see that the word continuation is here, and so as, as a way to kind of start, I think it's helpful that we set a little bit of context for why, you know, why, why this effort started in the first place. So I'm going to quickly take us back to 2012. In 2012, Hingham's water rates were the fifth highest in the state. You may recall that Macquarie, an Australian company, purchased the Aquarian Water Company in 2007. In 2009, they requested a 27 percent rate increase, and the DPU granted a 21 percent rate increase. Three years later, an increase of 18.7 percent was requested, and the DPU granted an 11 percent increase. And the DPU actually touted that 11 percent increase and, and pointed out that this was one of the lowest increases awarded in quite some time to a community. What was a little concerning to the town was at that time, there were filings with the DPU that suggested that we would continue to see rate increases every couple of years. And we were not only concerned about the rates, but one aspect of our operating budget is that we have a legal services budget. And every time one of these rate cases comes before the Department of Public Utilities, the town has to defend it. And that's how we, you know, that's how we get the rate increase, you know, requested at 27, perhaps down to 21. That costs a minimum of about $70,000 with every rate case. At the same time, we were experiencing a number of service issues. You may recall that in 2011, there were six water main breaks on Union Street alone, and to our surprise, repairing Union Street was not in the 2012 capital plan. Now, that prompted a conversation between the then sitting board of Selectman and Aquarian, and the town was told at the time that the capital budget is determined by a formula related to investment return, depreciation, and appetite for rate increases in service areas. And this came as a little bit of a surprise, because we were seeing more frequent and higher rate increases being awarded, and yet we still were having, we still weren't seeing the investment in the infrastructure. What was also of concern is the focus on investment returns. It seemed like the returns to the investors came before the benefits to the rate payers. We also, at the time, started looking at something called unaccounted-for water. Unaccounted-for water is clean, fresh water that gets pumped to the water treatment plant, it gets treated, and somewhere between the water treatment plant and all of the customers, it gets lost somewhere. And the DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, they have a standard. They say every community should, should strive to have only about 10 percent unaccounted-for water. And as you can see in this graph in Hingham, we've been above 10 percent consistently since 2003. In 2005, we were just under 11 percent, but you'll see that beginning in 2007, it, it trended back up. So we started thinking about this, and looking at the rates, and looking at the capital, and looking at the unaccounted-for water and the water supply, and said, "Well, what are other, what are other communities in Massachusetts doing?" And so this is a map of all the 300 and, I think, 51 communities in Massachusetts. And what we found in 2012 was that only 10 of them had privately owned water companies. The blue dots that you see are five communities that are, that are owned and operated by the Aquarian Water Company. That's Hingham Hull, North Cohasset, Oxford, and Milbury. The yellow dots represent five communities that have other privately-owned companies. That's Dover, it's Great Barrington, it's Milford, it's Templeton, and it's a community called Wittensville. But you see that the vast majority, I think 95 percent plus of, of the water delivery systems in the Commonwealth are, are owned either through a municipality, through a water district, and there are about 51 communities that get, that get their water from the MWRA. So as Hingham began thinking about exercising its right to purchase the water company, we understood, as we looked at the ownership, that doing this wasn't really going to make us an outlier. As a matter of fact, it was going to be a little bit more consistent with what a number of Massachusetts water companies have done. So in 2012, town meeting was actually presented with an appropriation request of half a million dollars. The, the article was amended on the floor of town meeting to $320,000, based on a discussion with Aquarian about sharing information and potentially avoiding, avoiding litigation. The article passed at town meeting, and a study committee was formed. I just want to show two quick things from what that study concluded. The bar chart that you see on the screen, which is, again, from 2013, shows that in a given year, the Aquarian Water Company collects about $12 million in annual ratepayer charges. So that's all of our water bills collectively, it's about $12 million. And what the study committee concluded was that about $6.7 million of that $12 million could be eliminated under municipal ownership. And that consists of a couple of things. First of all, there's debt on the water treatment plant, and actually, one part of Aquarian pays $1 million in rent to another part of Aquarian for the water treatment plant. So obviously, under town ownership, we wouldn't be paying ourselves rent, so that cost would go away. There's a bar that you see that's called return on the rate base. Public utilities are entitled to earn a rate of return. So when a public utility goes to the DPU, they say, "This is how much it costs me to do business, this is the value of my property," and the DPU acknowledges and accepts that the company is entitled to earn a rate of return that's typically in excess of 10 percent. Now remember, back in 2012, when we were doing this, we were still kind of recovering from the recession, and the idea that, you know, I don't, I don't know about others, but, you know, investments returning, a guaranteed return of, of in excess of 10 percent, little bit unheard of. Again, under town ownership, that would go away. Under town ownership, income taxes, state and federal taxes would go away. Under town ownership, depreciation would go away. Public utilities are able to pass their depreciation expense on to rate payers. So we're not only paying for the debt service on the assets, but then as those assets are being depreciated, we pay for that too. And the study committee also found other expenses, corporate overhead, some unfunded post-retirement costs and legal expenses, that total $6.7 million. And this slide really, I think, shows why this effort's been taking place for the past four years. So what could we do with munis, with that $6.7 million? Well, that would be used to fund the purchase price, because we've said all along that if the town were to consider purchasing the water company, it would have to be ratepayer-funded and not taxpayer-funded. We also could use money to accelerate capital improvements by $3 million in year one, and then set aside $2 million every year after for capital improvements. We set aside some money for new municipal charges such as billing, but even after all those things, our analysis indicated that the average annual savings under town ownership ranged from about $2.6 million to $3.2 million, and that's every single year. So if you put that over 20 years, you see the possibility of cost elimination anywhere between $55 and $68 million over 20 years. And again, that reflects a capital reserve, annual capital, and repayment of all of the expenses that have been incurred. I think it's also worth pointing out that back in 2013, the initial analysis suggested that the formula, as defined by the statute of 1879, would suggest an acquisition or a purchase price of between $50 and $60 million. The town, over the last four years, has pretty much, our additional analysis, our outside expert witnesses, have consistently valued the water system in that same $50 to $60 million range. And as we've also talked about the possibility of owning and operating the water company and perhaps outsourcing it, our initial analysis suggests that the savings improve with outsourcing. So as I mentioned, town meeting approved the study. The town filed a complaint in 2013 to determine the purchase price. April of 2014, annual town meeting approved $475,000 for litigation. The litigation itself, the trial, it took place in late February and early March over a five-day period. The closing arguments were made in May. In November of 2015, the court issued what's called a memorandum and order of findings and rulings, and directed both parties to work cooperatively to calculate a price based on the findings and rulings. As many of us are aware, the two parties were unable to do that, so in early February, both the town and Aquarian submitted what are called pleadings. A pleading is essentially our interpret, our development of a price calculation based on the order of finding and rulings. In those documents, Aquarian indicated an intent, an intent to appeal the judgment, and that's what brings us to this April 2016 town meeting, where Article 19 will request some additional funding. Before I speak about the additional funding, let me just summarize the costs that have been incurred over the past four years. From June of 2012 to March of 2016, the town has spent approximately $1,153,739. That's $118,000 for that initial study that took place in the first year, and just over $1 million for litigation. We've also broken it out into legal services, expert witness testimony, and administrative Since the study, since the study has, was initiated in 2012, Hingham Service Area A rate payers have seen savings on their water bills. In 2013, about a year after we began the feasibility study, Aquarian refinanced the debt on its water treatment plant. When we went in and, and exchanged information, we learned that the, that the interest rate on the water treatment plant debt in 2012 was 6.85 percent, considerably higher than market rates. That was refinanced to 4.1 percent. That generated approximately $900,000 in savings every year, and that has been passed on to rate payers for three years totaling a little bit, three and a half years totaling a little bit over $3 million. In addition, last year, Aquarian received a tax refund of approximately $400,000. That too was passed on to rate payers. So if you look, our town costs, including Article 19, would be just under $1.5 million over that same time period ratepayer savings, a little bit in excess of $3.5 million. The story isn't quite as good on the unaccounted-for water, but I think it just bears a quick mention. If you, if you notice, for the last four years, the unaccounted-for water has ranged between 21 and 23 percent. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. And to put that percentage into perspective, in 2013, we pumped just under 1.2 billion gallons of water out of the aquifer. So what is 23 percent of that? If 23 percent of that is unaccounted for, that's about 272 million gallons of water. Okay, so what does that mean? Well, the Accord Pond's storage capacity, according to documents from Aquarian, is about 523 million gallons. So, so what that means is that the unaccounted-for water in 2013 was about half of the storage capacity of the Accord Pond. If you look at it a different way, Boston.com says that Hingham spends about 60 gallons per person per day. So if you assume a household size of four, that is about 88,000 gallons per year in a household. 272 million gallons of water would support over 3,000 households that consume 88,000 gallons a year. So that's pretty, that's pretty significant. So Article 19. Article 19 requests $300,000 for legal and expert services for a possible appeal. It may be difficult to read, but what you see in the box here is a, is an image of one of the Aquarian pleadings. It says, "Several component parts of the court's memorandum will be appealed but are not discussed here." So this town meeting, we are requesting these funds based on our assessment that an appeal could happen. Again, what this is about is to obtain a determination of a purchase price, and I think it's important to remember that that is a purchase price that the town can take into the future. We've talked about Article 19 being finishing what we've started. It has been a long journey. We have incurred some costs along the way. Our rate payers have seen savings along the way. Our rate payers have seen savings along the way. We see Article 19 as the last step in determining a purchase price, again, for a future consideration by the town. And I believe Article 19, in addition to having the support of the selectmen, it has the recommendation of the advisory committee, and that advisory committee vote was a unanimous vote.
Thank you very much, Mary. Excellent presentation. Questions from my colleagues?
Just a couple of things. Very thorough, very, thank you for the effort putting it together. Just maybe, and I'll certainly, I know, Kerry's here, anybody that needs to add to what might, more of a question or comment. What we're waiting for is some determination from the court, and I'm trying to remember from all the discussions. The price will be determined supposedly by Oskary or based on a formula she sets? Is that correct? I'm trying to remember. Just so people at home can understand.
Right. The court's been requested to do two things. One is to set the actual formula to describe in step-by-step how you do the purchase price in case it's done years from now. And the second thing is to actually set a current purchase price, so that if the town were to consider it now, there would be the actual price right now. And if it's to be in the future, she would set up the formula so the town could use that in the future.
Okay. That's good. So she's actually going to set up current price?
Correct. That's what she's been requested to do.
Oh, good. Good. And obviously, town meeting in the future would have to make a decision on whether to accept that number.
Correct. The town meeting, in order to purchase the water company, actually requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting. And so that would be a town meeting consideration to determine, does the town want to purchase the water company or not?
Right. And I know people have been following this for the last several years, but I just wanted to make sure we highlighted that. And then the last thing, just, and I love that chart on page five with the savings and so forth. The actual purchase, if we do purchase it, will be based on some type of funding mechanism, right? I mean, in terms of the price, the original price, whatever the price is, we're going to have to...
What we would do is issue bonds, and I think that's what the right side of this chart is, fund the purchase price. If you remember Mr. Ziegfried and Mr. Asher, when they went through how they calculated things, they'd asked me, you know, based on this purchase price, what would our debt service costs be? Because the model had always been, you know, consider this only with rate payer funding, no bleed into the taxpayer, no need to use property taxes. So it had to be funded from existing revenues coming out of the water, the water rate system now.
And Paul, the savings that you see here reflect an interest rate assumption of 3% on the purchase and 3.5% on the ongoing capital. And as we just heard Jean mention, for example, some of the refunding that we're doing as a town, it would seem that those interest rates, if anything, are a little bit conservative.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. For the audience at home, Mr. Ryan is counsel for the town that litigated this matter in front of Judge Christine Roach in the Business Litigation Section of Suffolk Superior Court. Okay. Questions from the audience. Hearing none. I'd like to thank you, Mary, for that fine presentation.
Tom and Ted, thank you for all your help with everything.
Yeah, thank you.
Tom was master on the charts this week.
Made it easy.
Very clear. Okay. All right. You have a number of votes to move through. All right. We will turn to the vote section. Let's, we have our, you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. The first item is a request from Chief Olson with respect to the reappointment of special police officers for the town of Hingham. So this is the time of year that you do this, every cycle? A number of these gentlemen are regular police officers who retired and continue to serve the town. So I could have a motion here, please?
Make a motion to reappoint the following personnel as special police officers for the town of Hingham. Brian Aguirre, Mark Brennan, Kenneth Corson, Joseph Driscoll, Daniel Galvin, Michael McHugh, Michael Murray, Michael Parker, Mitchell Powers, Michael Riley, Charles Suther, James Taylor, Russell Way, James Wells, and Brian Willard.
Second.
I'm sure Mr. Azjero won't take offense to that.
Apologize for that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Sure. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the warrant for the 2016 annual town meeting pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 39, Section 10.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Yeah, maybe Paul would like to take this one, too.
The next one? Sure. Having spoken with the office, and John has said I can vote on it, too. So this will be the make a motion to sign the warrant article for the special state primary, which is the senate race that I am going to be in next week, so make that motion.
Hold it off.
That's right. That's what I told the...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Now we come to the proposal by the chief for an additional K-9 officer. They also have a memo in your package on this from the chief. Drug dog. Chief, would you join us at the table? Just take us through this briefly. Deputy, you're welcome to relocate to the front of the room.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you tonight?
Good.
Good.
As you know, Officer Jim Foss, at the current K-9 axle, has reached the retirement age. So Axel will be retiring, so Jim is stepping down as the K-9 officer. So we're in a position now with it, we're relooking the program. We'd like to continue with the current patrol dog that we have, but we'd also like to make an additional request to add another K-9 that would be dedicated to drug issues and to search and rescue. So it would allow us to actually have better service provided. And we think in the age of the opioid epidemics that are out there, I think having a dog that is capable of searching areas, public buildings, schools, the drug search dog is actually usually, let's say, a lot friendlier dog. Sometimes they're labs or something like that, so they don't, they're not the German Shepherds or the more aggressive dogs. And we think this would be a real benefit to the town. The cost effect is really nothing over the period of time, because Jim gets called out for both now. And so the amount of call-outs would pretty much remain the same. I think one of the other benefits that we'll be able to see is that we all know that the public loves the dog, we'll be able to probably have access to other places that we haven't had before. And I think it's a real positive thing. The patrol officers, I think, generally like the idea and that they're interested in moving forward with it, and it gives them another opportunity to do a specialty job.
Dave, do you have anything to...
No, I just think it's been very successful in other communities that have tried splitting the dog into two dedicated K-9s, one patrol, one narcotics. And I think it benefits the town without any additional cost to the budget, and we can maintain it within our current budget and provides a benefit to the community as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions from my colleagues?
No, I think you just answered my question.
I think I have the same question about the budget. Yep. Good.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request of the Hingham Police Department for an additional K-9 dedicated to drug detention, detection, and search and rescue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. This is kind of ministerial. Next one. Change of manager.
Who made the motion?
Please, if you would.
Sure. Make a motion to approve the request of the Hingham Yacht Club for a change of officers as follows. Peter Ross, President Commodore Nicholas, Jay Bond, Treasurer Jennifer Johan, Secretary James Randall, Vice Commodore and Director Ann Steven M. Izalonas, Rear Commodore and Director, subject to the approval of the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester. Do you want to set the table, please? Greetings, salutations.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for coming in. Thank you for coming in. We've got two contracts here that are, well, three.
You're going to have four contracts here to sign.
Busy night for the highway.
All of these are continuation contracts based upon the idea that the engineering department has looked at. As you know, when they bid these contracts, they include the second year. Frequently, we find that prices escalate on us. If we can get the contractor to commit to two years, it's usually a better price. My understanding is that the engineering department has gone out and verified that these current prices are cheaper than what we'd get in the marketplace today. Or at least very competitive.
Questions from my colleagues?
No, I reviewed these, and thank you for providing them in advance.
Let's have some motions in, please.
Make a motion to sign a one-year contract with Highway Safety System, Inc. for crosswalk surface treatment as outlined in the bid package CWST 15. This contract is valid through December 31, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So I'll make a motion to sign a one-year contract with Mass Pavement Reclamation, Inc. for Equipment Rental and Labor Services as outlined in the bid packages EQUIP 15. This contract is valid through December 31, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to sign a one-year contract with Aggregate Industries for hot mix asphalt production and pavement installation, structure adjustment, controlled cold milling, cold planing, as outlined in the bid package PAV 15. This contract is valid through December 31, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to sign a one-year contract with Markings, Inc., Pavement Markings as outlined in bid number six. This contract is valid through December 31, 2016.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks so much, Harry.
Thank you so much. I'd like to take a moment to wish Mr. Giannone the best of luck in next week's election.
Thank you, Harry. I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night, and thank you for our money. Hopefully.
See you soon, Harry.
Okay. Next on the agenda, and I see the chief and the deputy remain, so I'm not sure whether they want to speak to this. So this is a summer children's craft market located on the Tunnel Cap throughout May and June, July and August. Do you have any...
I have been in contact with all the potties. They actually started doing this last year on a temporary basis. It's sort of a nice program. It's focused around young children, learning how to sell products and being entrepreneurial at a young age. It's confined to the area of the Tunnel Cap, basically behind the one-way section of South Street. I've talked to Liz of the Downtown District, Liz Klein of the Downtown District, and it is no problem. Our biggest concern right now, and I've already mentioned, is that based upon the plans of the Lincoln Building, we might have to alter things around, but we don't think that will be an issue.
Okay, yeah, should be all right. Questions from my colleagues?
No.
Nope.
Is there going to be a detail down there, chief?
They combined it with some of the other events that are going on, so there would be details during some of the events. Obviously, they're trying to do it during the peak times when people are there. But it's pretty much confined, and also, there've been cooperatives. They're doing off-site parking so that it doesn't congest with the parking issues down there. So they drop off, set up, and then move the cars down to probably Station Street area.
Is this the first time this has taken place, or did it take place last year?
No, they did it twice last year, and it was, it was no problems at all.
Okay.
We have some conditions to make sure that, you know, everyone's supervised and everything they take in, they take out. So there would be no use of anybody else's dumpsters or anything else like that.
Leave no trace.
Leave no trace, exactly.
Questions from my colleagues? I have a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve the spring/summer children's craft markets located on the Tunnel Cap on the following days, Saturday, May 21st, from 1:30 p.m. to 3 o'clock p.m. Thursday, June 30th, from 3:30 p.m. to 5 p.m. Thursday, July 28th, from 3:30 p.m. to 5 p.m. Saturday, July 30th, from 1:30 p.m. to 3 o'clock p.m. Thursday, August 25th, from 3:30 p.m. to 5 o'clock p.m. Sunday, September 18th, from 3:30 p.m. to 5 o'clock p.m. And Sunday, October 16th, from 1:30 p.m. to 3 o'clock p.m.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Okay. Now we have a couple of proclamations. Town administrator tells me we really should be reading them off, so, Mary, why don't you do the first one?
Okay. Thank you very much. Town of Hingham, Massachusetts Earth Day proclamation. Whereas the town of Hingham, as part of the global community, is participating in Earth Day 2016 and recognizes the environmental challenges faced by all peoples, and whereas it is understood that as citizens of the global community, the town of Hingham must step forward and take action to create positive environmental changes that will support the management and care of our environment. And whereas environmental education, along with awareness, helps the citizens of Hingham develop the concerns and skills to address the environmental challenges we face. And whereas, in recognition of today's environmental challenges, we plant at Jackass Park this lilac tree as a symbol to our commitment to the good stewardship that, of all, that is entrusted to our care. Whereas, the town of Hingham pledges to support environmental and educational initiatives in our community that encourage others to undertake similar actions. Now therefore, we, Paul K. Healy, Paul J. Gannon, and Mary M. Powers, selectmen of the town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 22nd, 2016, as Earth Day.
Motion. So I'll just make a motion proclaim April 22nd, 2016 to be Earth Day in Hingham.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Paul, would you do the next one, please?
Sure. The Town of Hingham, Massachusetts Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, sorry, paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, countless other wood products. And trees in Hingham increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, Hingham, Massachusetts has been recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now therefore, we, Paul Healy, Paul Gannon, and Mary Powers, selectmen of the town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2016, Arbor Day in the town of Hingham, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, support our town's forestry program, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations.
I'll entertain a motion to proclaim April 29, 2016 to be Arbor Day in Hingham.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Arbor Day, per day. And you have one special license left. All right. Yes. Last but not least. I'll entertain a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Hingham Shipyard Marina's care of Donna Haggett for the South Shore In-Water Boat Show to be held 24 Shipyard Drive on Saturday, April 23rd, Sunday, April 24th, 2016, from 1 p.m. to 5 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Selectmen reports, town administrator reports. Mr. Alexiades?
I will remind everybody again that look in your mail. You'll be receiving one of these either Friday, Saturday, or Monday. these either Friday, Saturday, or Monday, your town warrant, chock full of wonderful, interesting information. If anybody has any questions, feel free to call our office, and we'll try to get the answer for you.
Mr. Mayo?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Power?
The only thing I'm going to mention, I, I know we have the Citizen of the Year reception coming up on Sunday. Just want to acknowledge and congratulate Jerry Duff for being named, for being named Citizen of the Year, and congratulations to all the nominees who were put forward from different places. As, as you read all the accomplishments of all the nominees, it, it just reminds us all how fortunate we are to have great volunteers in the community, and, and we appreciate the Hingham Journals acknowledging our, our citizen volunteers in that manner. So looking forward to a, a nice celebration.
Me, too.
I had the privilege this past week of, of attending a play that the Subs Abuse Prevention Coalition had been working indirectly with, supporting the, the efforts of this group, a theater group. And basically, what it was is, it was a story about recovery and, and the perils. And it was directed towards students and parents, I believe, in the community, and as a parent, I found it very, very compelling. And as someone who's been an attorney and has seen the destruction, the devastation that opioids and drugs can cause in neighborhoods, it certainly hit home for me to see it. I think that the benefit was that it, it basically informed parents and, and concerned citizens of, of things to look out for and ways to help, you know, prevent and obviously educate people about it, and obviously where to find treatment. And ultimately, I think the, the young men and women who were participating in this, this theater were all success stories, that it had been able to, and I know Chief was there as well, and it was, it was a nice crowd. So I, I really, it hit home for me, it was very compelling. And the only other thing I would ask everybody is, is, and I think this should be in every election, I ask people to just keep in mind that there is an election April 12, and I urge everybody in Hingham to vote.
I second that. I'd like to thank the town and my colleagues for their flexibility. Last week, I happened to find myself in Washington, D.C. I was participating in recommendations to the Secretary of Defense with respect to the 2016 Freedom Award winner. I have to tell you, the Pentagon is perhaps the most intense building in the world, and, you know, I've been in there a couple times, and it's always to say, and the patriotism is high. I'm just so proud of this town to be a Freedom Award winner, with so many other deserving candidates to be selected by our Secretary of Defense for this award. It's just a phenomenal recognition of our commitment to our guardsmen and service members. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen of this town, for supporting the policies that we have in place at this time. Unless there's anything else anybody wants to add, I'll entertain a motion to...
Quickly, thank you for taking the time to go down there and represent the town.
Thank you. Tuesday, bribery. Vote early, vote often.
Motion with your...
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Good night.
Yeah.